Town of McCandless. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting for January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Councilmember Zachary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to announcements. We have a Christmas tree pickup until the fourteenth here at town. And I believe Waste Management will pick up the trees until the twenty-eighth. And the community, we also have a drop-off spot from the county at North Park Pool until the fourteenth. Additionally, the McCandless Democratic Committee has a sock and sweatshirt pickup for Veteran Leadership Program. There's a box here in the lobby box of Town Hall and that'll be here until the end of the twenty, until the end of February. Does any other members of council have an announcement to make about anything upcoming? No? Ms. Zachary, anything?
No, thank you.
No, okay. As we get started, I want to remind everybody while we're here, we're here to work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we are all neighbors. Item number four. We're going to move to approve the meeting minutes submitted each member of council in their packet for the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Does anybody have any comments or alterations? Ms. Clunin?
I don't have my copy of the minutes from them, but on page five, Councilperson Spahnhaus was listed as both the the first move and the second on the Pine Creek holdings.
Any other?
That's all I have.
Any other members of council have the alterations to the minutes? Okay, so the motion should say as revised. Okay, is there, is there a motion to accept meeting minutes as revised?
Motion to accept the minutes as revised.
Second, Ms. Clunin, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Now, we're going to move on to public comment on upcoming agenda items. Also, please note those members from the public that are here, we have a general public comment at item number eleven on the agenda. So we'll start with anybody in council chambers that wants to talk about an agenda item. Come on up to the microphone. And if we don't see anybody there, if anybody online would like to make a comment, type into the chat box and we can send you a mic request. Do we have anybody?
Yes, we have one.
Okay.
We have two now. The first one is Mr. Paul Hackman.
Let me down.
One zero five two nine, Abilene.
Okay, Mr. Hackman. Mr. Hackman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you. I just wanted to comment that relative to the redistricting discussion later on in the agenda that I am very much against splitting McCandless between two representatives. We are such a integral part of the North Allegheny School District and barely make up as a single community, probably the largest percentage of students and voters within that school district. And splitting it seems to me to diminish us, not to give us two representatives, but to have a half of each one. Where we deserve, I think, full representation. I also believe that because of our increasing Asian-American community and that we also are a community of interest as well that the commission is trying to pay as much attention to as they can. We've, we have a great school district, we have a great community, and I think having part of it whacked off and sent to another district is not the best thing for McCandless.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Hackman. Is there anybody else?
Yes, there is Mary Ann Love, seventy-one Westchester Drive.
Okay, Ms. Love, can you hear us?
I see her. I can hear you, yes.
Okay, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm also here to communicate my hope that the state legislative reappointment commission take another look at McCandless. Preliminary, that's preliminary map, splits McCandless wards. Putting five wards in District Thirty while leaving two wards in District Twenty-eight, which also splits the North Allegheny School District. The preliminary redistricting maps submitted by the commission still favors Republicans, a hundred and four to ninety-nine Democrats, and that's based on the two thousand and sixteen and twenty presidential elections. And also, there's been a population trend over the last ten years from rural to suburbs decreasing the Republican population. Still, in each election since two thousand and twelve, the percentage of Republican seats on the Pennsylvania House has exceeded the percentage of Republican votes. For example, in two thousand and eighteen, Republicans won forty-five percent of the vote, but retained fifty-four percent of the seats. Of the chairperson of the commission is Mark Nordenberg, the retired chancellor of Pitt. He was appointed chairperson by the State Supreme Court because four partisan members could not agree on a chairperson. A difficult job, especially with redistricting, because it's impossible to please all the people all the time. His reward for his service and difficult job being accused by Republicans of being biased and gerrymandering in favor of Democrats. I have been an adult in Pittsburgh for fifty-three years, and I know Mr. Nordenberg has an absolutely stellar reputation, impeccable integrity. Mr. Nordenberg has said he expects the commission could make a number of changes, and I recommend asking the commission to take another look at McCandless and the North Allegheny School District to determine whether the split is absolutely necessary. I understand the commission gets conflicting requests. And a way to avoid this same old, same old partisanship every ten years is to take the redistricting process totally out of the hands of politicians and replace with a citizens' commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love, for your comments. Any other online?
Yes, there's Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown, can you hear us?
Yes, okay, I was just figuring out the unmute.
Okay, we can hear you. You have five minutes.
Okay, um, I, let's see, I, I've been in the North Hills for fifty-seven years and lived in Franklin Park for fifty of those and have moved to Cumberland Woods Village, which is in a facility which I hope McCandless is very proud of, great place to live. Um, I'm also concerned about the split of McCandless. I'd like to sort of relate it to what I see as a larger pattern and, and ask whether there are some aspects of it that, that we might be missing. I watched the meeting that was held in, in McCandless Town Hall on Tuesday, I think it was, by the Republican Policy Committee. One of the most, well, let me backtrack a bit. Besides splitting the North Allegheny School District, the split in the Pine Richland School District remains. Municipalities have moved around so that Avonworth and Quaker Valley School Districts are also split, and I found out on Tuesday that so is Shaler, and that's beginning to look like a bit of a pattern. I think one of the most effective speakers at that meeting on Tuesday was the township manager of Shaler, Tim Rogers. And he pointed out not just splits in school districts, but at least along the Route Eight corridor, splits and arrangements that have been serving the the community for some time. The North Hills Council of Governments, he noted that the Hampton-Shaler Water Authority is split among several districts. The Shaler-Hampton and Etna EMS Authority. And he also noted that since a lot of Shaler has been put in with the city and the office is, is likely to be in, in the city, possibly Lawrenceville, that it would make it harder for senior citizens to, to access services there. So I'm beginning to wonder whether this is, this sort of applies to other, other places. I don't know how much research anybody's done. I'm sure that your staff is competent and has done some. But what other kinds of arrangements that affect McCandless might be, might be impacted, water authorities, sewer authorities, whatever. And I think that it would be a good idea if most of the municipalities in the North Hills, because this does look like a pattern, took some time to check into what, what sorts of longstanding arrangements may be disrupted by the split. So I don't think it's just McCandless, although I certainly like McCandless not to be split this way. But I think it's a bigger problem, and I hope that the, the McCandless people will, will take a look at what, what pieces of their arrangements that they've been using for quite a while are going to be disrupted in this way. If anybody has any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Brown, can you give your address? You said Cumberland Woods, is that where you reside?
It's four hundred Cumberland Woods Drive, apartment four thirty-one, Allison Park, one five one oh one. Yes, great place, by the way.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more comments?
Yes, we do. The next person who would like to comment is Carol Caliendo, eight forty-nine Vincent Way.
Hello.
Can you hear us, Ms. Caliendo?
Yes, I can. Um.
For sure.
My name's Carol Caliendo. I live in the retirement community of Vincentian Villa. I'm rather new to the McCandless area. I've been here less than two years. But in the time I've been here, I have been pleasantly surprised by the community spirit, and I am definitely encouraged by the status of the North Allegheny School System. On, as a longtime educator, although it's higher education, but still as a long-term educator, I understand the importance of having a good legislative background and input into the school system. And to have the school system divided, I think, is a very unfortunate situation. And so I would really speak against dividing McCandless. And as some of the other speakers have said, the, not only the school system, but the McCandless EMS system and any of the other McCandless-wide public offerings, to have them split would not be advantageous to us as citizens of this community. I also attended the online version of the meeting held last week by the Republican Committee. And I was appalled by the lack of diversity. It seemed as if it was mostly all white men. And I know McCandless is made up of more than just white men, and I would like to make sure that our, the, the women and the people of color who live in McCandless don't get divided, along with, you know, it's like dividing the baby. I don't think that needs to happen. So I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Caliendo, for your comments.
The next individual that wants to speak is Irene Caliendo, four eleven Haugh Drive.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Ms. Caliendo.
Good evening. I have just two brief comments. The first is relative to Ms. Love's very articulate and informed comments that while I do not prefer and would, and wish that both the McCandless towns and the North Allegheny School District stay contiguous, that I believe is advantageous to our citizens. But I also believe that the most important concern is to draw a fair map and not a gerrymandered map. And we have one of the three most gerrymandered states in the country. I'm not happy to be in that company. It's a very short list, so we need to make great strides to undo that. And I hope I'm not out of order with this second comment, because it, it doesn't speak directly to the maps, but to the process. And I would request that council consider sending a letter to Mr. McCurry and ask him to vote against the newly proposed measure in the House that will take the process out of the hands of a bipartisan commission and give it to the political state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Yes, Carolyn Gibbs, nine five five two, Pasleton Drive.
Ms. Gibbs, can you hear us?
I do.
Okay, you have five minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I want to echo some of the previous comments and just say that compared to the current legislative map, overall, the proposed map for state-house districts is a large improvement, and it corrects a wrong which has existed for many years. And the new proposed map would make our Commonwealth a more fair place than it has been. Statewide, the proposed map meets the requirements for compactness, contiguity, and equal population. It's better than the current one on competitiveness and on minority representation, and I feel these are all really important qualities to be considered in a legislative map. Moreover, the proposed map is more fair on partisan grounds. The currently drawn map was unfairly drawn to favor one party, and I look forward to that being corrected for the sake of our Commonwealth. And however, as, as my fellow citizens have pointed out, improvements could be made on the map. I am also not in favor of the splitting of our township because of the reasons that others have listed. And on another note, I just want to say that I have not attended a town council meeting in a long time. It is very hard to determine who is speaking. And I wonder if you would consider a change in your procedure so that it's more easy for someone watching from online to tell who is speaking at any moment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? No, okay, thanks for robust comments. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Now, we're going to go to reports of committees. For those on the board and those in public, please be patient with us. Since we reorganized last week, a lot of committee assignments and liaisons positions have changed over, so a lot of the members of council are still just trying to get up to speed on their, on their new assignments. So please bear with us. That being said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Roppa, the Public Safety Committee Chair, to go through her staff and liaison reports.
I'm going to yield to Chief. If I may. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the new council members. As you all have my report probably in front of you, I just wanted to touch on a few highlights. I was a note that I would say went above and beyond our normal business for the month of December. In the month of December, the police department collected generous donations from the town. The entire town donated to the North Hills Community Outreach, many toys for the children and some basic necessities and toiletries and such for families in need. Also in December, my officers and I participated in a no-shave November, which I turned into December as well. In-house, we collected over twenty-two hundred dollars that we donated to a local McCandless family that has a child that has some medical expenses and surgeries, and they had some significant expenses above and beyond what their insurance would cover, so we donated that to the family. Regarding the police work for the month of December, like I said, above and beyond our normal business, McCandless officers participated in two North Hills DUI Task Force events. All the subtle information in that paragraph two, for anybody who might want to know, I'll leave that for you folks to read and ask any questions you might have. But there were two events and our officers participated in both in December. A bit of a feel-good story, middle of December, the police department, as well as with assistance from the Public Works Department, were able to rescue a dog that was trapped in a drainpipe over, I believe it was on Deer View Point. There's some other things on here. I'll leave you folks reading for yourself. I would turn at this point, if I may, for a moment and let members of council know that in December, we were also awarded the police department with the help of the town management team grant for body-worn cameras. I believe it's a one-to-one grant. So as, and as part of that process and one of the requirements for, to meet the stipulations in the grant would be that we develop a policy for these body-worn cameras in anticipation of purchasing them. I have that policy. I think Mr. Grimm probably has it and provided it to you folks. So if anybody, you know, would have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at some point. Mr. Corwell, you've already looked it over, haven't you, counselor? So whenever, whenever you folks are ready, we stand ready to, to make that leap. And I brought one of these. This is borrowed from Northern Regional. I was hoping that you folks could handle it if you'd like. I'd ask you not to press any buttons, because then you might record yourselves or us for the Northern Regional Police Department. This is basically what we would be, the quote that I have, it's a newer model than this, but not by much. So by and large, this would be what our officers would dawn once we purchased them. That's a camera itself in a magnet. This is just, and that's a clip. It's another option for officers to, I'm up.
How's it worn, Ryan? Just like you said, on your, on their chest?
Yeah, Mr. Paul, it is, uh, the one that's on the back of it when you get to it. It's actually two pieces, three pieces, the camera and then backing and another part that's a magnet. Mr. Singer's already taken the part that, yeah, be careful with that. I hear that it'll, it'll cut your fingers if you're not too careful. But you can do the magnet right here or you can do the clip. A lot of our officers wear the exterior vests. The clip would be better for those exterior carriers. The officers still have the traditional shirt. We'll put that magnet inside of it, and it's a pretty strong magnet. It's something that we've been looking at for probably a year and a half or better now, as trying to obtain, you know, so.
Chief, what's your timeline from order placement to being able to put into use?
So I got a freshened-up quote Friday from WatchGuard. That is the company that we, and that's the reason, that's the WatchGuard camera. We have those in the in-car systems now, so these would talk and work seamlessly with that, with the in-car cameras as well. And they're telling me probably about an eight-to-twelve week turnaround. And then once we have them onboard, I'm hoping to grab PM Computing or anybody that the town manager allows to help us get the server and everything up and running for them.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Um, one, in your, your suggestions and everything that Mr., that was shared to us, talked a lot about training, which I'm really happy to see. Will all that training be occurring in-house or will be, be sending certain officers out for outside of McCandless training?
So ma'am, I believe we're going to be able to do it all in-house. We may have an initial, like, where I would maybe take one officer, have them trained somewhere and train the trainer, we call it, where they would then come back if even needs be and then train the officers. Probably do a training where we can do most if not all of it in-house.
Okay, I have two more questions, if that's okay. The other one was other neighboring municipalities, do they have the same model, the same kind of program in use that, that we can learn from what they've learned?
Absolutely, ma'am. In fact, we were speaking with Northern Regional today. That's where that's from. They have the same system as we do. Ross Township is, I think, considering if they might have even, I'm not certain who they use, but many, WatchGuard is one of the big names. And another one would be Axon Pager, the company that makes the pager. Other agencies around us have used that, and they, they enjoyed the cameras, but the, the storage was prohibitively expensive. And so Northern Regional is one of those agencies that, that found that out, so they ended up going with the WatchGuard. For us, it just seemed to make sense on many levels.
I like the idea of talks to the, what you already have in place.
On a scene and you go in the house and you decide you better record it, you press your button. Now it's going to record, it's going to start that camera, but it's also going to start the one in your car, and it's going to record everything that's said, the actions that are happening in front of the officer, as well as anything that might happen in front of the control vehicle.
And I have one more question. I know sometimes that our officers respond, because we have the McKnight Road corridor, the Route Nineteen corridor, sometimes I've seen a Ross car on the scene with a McCandless car, et cetera. Is there an obligation then that you have to work, like, notify the other officers that this is in use? Has that kind of protocol come into place or is it a question that we need to answer?
When practical, you are to notify anyone, even a citizen, that the actions and conversations are being recorded. The situation will dictate whether or not that, that warning or notification can be given, obviously, if it's something that is, you know, rapidly evolving, they may not be able to say it. But by and large, if you are able to notify anyone, whether it's the community or another agency, you should give those warnings, absolutely. And I think it also, there will be some potential evidentiary things on those cameras. Obviously, that's one of the reasons we would use them. And we would share that information with the agency too, if they make an arrest and they need footage from our system. I'm sure right to know who comes into play eventually for this footage as well.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was a whole new world that we haven't opened that door yet.
Yeah, so we will continue to learn as we go, so there will be a new program for us. But I know that things are in place and I, I have the ability to speak with neighboring chiefs and those agencies to get any questions we have as we, as we grow, answer that they've already experienced as growing pains, if there are any.
Okay, and I, I have one more question, if that's okay. I hate to take up everyone's time, but this is not regarding the body-worn cameras. This is just, I, I heard there was an incident with one of, an officer up north by nine-ten today, and I didn't know if you had heard about that, but if, if there was any updates or if we could, as a council, just share our concern for that officer. Who, who, it was a vehicle rolled over the side of the road up on nine-ten by the Giant Eagle.
A police vehicle? You know what, ma'am, I have not heard about that yet. I'll check into it.
Well, I just wanted to say, we, we, you know, share our concern.
I'm surprised that I haven't heard about that.
It could have been just social media talk, but.
If it's on route nine-ten, I'm assuming it's either Northern Regional or Franklin Park.
Right.
I'll look into it. Northern Regional, okay.
Just to share, share our concern for that officer.
Absolutely, pass that along. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have any questions?
I have one question, and maybe Bob can help too. Have you been asked by the Technology Committee at all about these body cams and any interfacing with the new technology that they're looking into, that it would be able to be interfaced?
We'd be happy to, ma'am. We haven't yet.
They're aware, and we've been working to make sure that everything can interface with everything.
Seamlessly. Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Does it have a LED that lights when it's on?
It does, Mr. Casey. When it, when it powers on, there's, there's one that's green that says that it's, it's powered. And when the officer hits record, there's one on the other side that is red, and they'll both be illuminated then whenever it's recording, the green and the red. Our new model, I believe, is set up the same way that, like I said, the one that we would obtain would be the next version, but they're very similar. I'm sure, you know, just some minor changes, but I think that remain the same.
Thanks.
Um, Mr. President?
Yes.
Is it set to discuss the the camera policy? We've had a good introduction to the policy, to the cameras themselves. Is this the time to discuss the policy or will that be more discussed when it's at another time?
Guess this would be the time. Go ahead, Ms. Akri. What questions did you have?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. I noticed that all the, that there will be a body camera technician who will be one of the police officers and that all of this information will be kept in-house. Is that correct from my reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and is, for some reason, I was under the impression that it would be cleaner if this information was gathered and held outside the police station, just in case some of those came into question that the very people who were in them would be the one keeping them.
Well, ma'am, I would say this, I believe that what we will have is, I will oversee it, of course, but we'll have likely have the lieutenant in charge of the the program in general. And by and large, he would not be involved, hopefully, in many of those videos. So my point is the officers who are showing up in those videos should not have regular access, except when it's approved by a supervisor for the purposes of evidence or such. They would not, otherwise would not have regular access to those videos. And I believe that they are, it's set up the software and such, and I can double check that for you so that there'll only be certain individuals that are approved to gain access to the videos through the software. And obviously, they cannot, you know, will not be able to have any ability to go in and erase them and such. I can also check in with the other PDs that, like I said, have used these for a year or a number of years and see if they have a situation where there's an outside entity that, if I'm understanding your question correctly, and if they do, how they go about doing that.
All right, thank you. It just seems sometimes things get lost and then people think it was intentional and it's always the important thing that gets lost, you know, and so we don't want to have anything to look, look bad. I, so I had a question on 3B and this would probably be for Mr. Corble that says copies can be requested by the officer for personal, is that for personal ownership? But I couldn't understand that on 3, 3B. It said that the officer could request copies of those videos? Is that correct? That's what I saw there.
Maybe. I'm trying to find exactly where.
Yeah, yeah. If you look at the long documents, oh, some page 24. But none of, there were no page numbers on this document, or I would try to, try to make you a little bit closer. It's toward the end, under duplications, requests for retention. The it can be to ensure its delivery to the requesting officer. Does, does that mean that the officer has a copy of this, the officer involved? Is that what that means?
Yeah, that, ma'am, that means for court purposes would be only, they may review it at their request for the the report's purposes to make certain that they are being accurate with their report. But I believe this is speaking to situations where they will need a copy of the court for the magistrate's office or for criminal court in downtown.
I would concur with the chief's interpretation.
Okay, all right, all right. Just by looking at it, it looks like that the officer can say, well, I'd like to have a copy of all my interactions to keep for my personal records. So the town will retain ownership of all of these recordings.
Correct, ma'am. We will not disseminate them, officers, for personal reasons.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Any other questions of?
Thank you, folks.
Yes, Rob, but you want to continue with your?
I think fire marshal's report is in the packet. And so is the code enforcement violations, points, statistics, the report from December. And
Maybe Bob can.
One thing that I just wanted to point out from the code reports and the permit report is that one major project will be started at EPMC Pass that interior renovations in that building. So if you look, there was about $30 million or so worth of value in in work being done. So it looks like a busy month, 35 permits and over $35 million. So it was a busy month for the building inspection. And I wanted, it's actually my pleasure to introduce a new fire marshal. His name is Jeff Whistler. He is coming to us from the Borough Bellevue. Jeff has held several positions with the Borough Bellevue from firefighter and lieutenant in their paid department to fire marshal, deputy emergency management coordinator and code enforcement zoning officer. So he's worn a lot of hats for the borough, done a lot of good work for them. Jeff also serves as a volunteer in the Ohio Township Volunteer Fire Department. He has countless certifications in fire inspection, firefighter skills, hazardous materials handling and training and emergency management. One of the good things from my perspective is he has a bachelor's degree from Penn State. And so will be serving primarily in our fire marshal role and I'm hoping that we can use some of his skills in other areas. But he'll be investigating various building violations, fire hazards within buildings, overseeing our false alarm ordinance billing, responding to complaints, conducting trainings and drills for the community, conducting training for the fire companies and also working with the fire companies on the continued work on the step-up program that supports volunteer efforts here in McCandless. And I think we certainly look forward to Jeff starting to work with us on the 17th and we welcome you.
Jeff, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Little personal history, if you don't mind sharing, like, did you grow up around here or?
Sure. So I've lived in the North Hills since I was eight years old. Grew up the north side of Pittsburgh and moved out when I was eight. So unfortunately, I did, and I don't know if I should share this, but it'll come up in the background check. I did go to a big rival of North Allegheny School District. I went to North Hills. I really don't go back to any games, so. I have two kids are both teenagers, loving to death. They're both in high school at the Edward School District. I reside in Ohio Township. My wife and I have lived there for the last, I guess, 22 years now. So that's what we call home, which is very, very close, obviously, to here. I want to thank everybody who's involved in the interview process for Bob, Patricia, to the fire chiefs. And of course, you all as council for approving me as your next fire marshal. I look forward to serving the community. I've been serving Bellevue for the last 18 years. So I look forward to serving McCandless for a number of years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to family.
If anybody have any questions. Can't tree do, deliver a finding next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be all right to continue with you.
Personnel Board, Carolyn.
Okay, so you guys have your meeting minutes in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know. Our next meeting's next one's on the 19th.
Firefighters, Jason.
So I am the Chair of the Volunteer Firefighter Standing Committee. The previous meeting, I was not a council member to attend. I did talk to Bob and the next meeting will be sometime in March. Bob might have any updates from the previous one.
One, one update from the previous meeting. There are continued discussions regarding the development of strategic plans for the volunteer fire companies, all three companies working together to develop a strategic plan. That information will be discussed further in the March meeting, but some of the background information that Chief Quanchar had promised to get, he's disseminated earlier this week and I'll make sure that you get that.
Councilmember Ropa. Councilmember Ropa?
Yes.
I did want to point out just a little clerical thing on the Personnel Board. The, the posted, it says minutes in our package. It actually says, it's supposed to say agenda. It says meet minutes and it also has attendees on the meeting that hasn't happened yet. So it looks like maybe somebody copied and pasted that. That could be a little confusing if anyone's looking at that. Should say agenda, not minutes for a meeting that hasn't happened yet and not have attendees on there. Just a little housekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you. C and D, I'm going to have to yield to Bob because I have not participated in any of these yet.
The least community engagement ad hoc committee, we're going to discuss later. Continue that. And then the rest is really just, if any one of the here has public comment on anything that was touched on under the public safety. Then anyone online have any comments on the public safety? None? Okay. Next, report of facilities management committee, Mr. Singer.
So item number one is staff reports. As was included in your packet was the public works activity report. And Jeff, if available online, he can speak to the review of the Plan 2022 paving program. There he is.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Hi, yeah. Good evening. I'm sorry I could not attend the meeting in person. Real quick with the, the paving program this year. If you look at your packet and the list, we have some, some, some of the roads are highlighted in red. We send a letter out early fall to all the utility companies. We give them our paving list and ask them if they foresee any, any of their projects interfering with our program. This year, we, we actually got quite a few back. I'm sure there's still a few that are, that are waiting to be turned in, but the items in red, I believe there's seven of them. Those are going to be pulled off this year's paving program due to utility work and probably put on next year's. The, there is one in yellow, Moreland Road. Moreland Road had a huge, I believe it was a waterline upgrade from last year that was removed from the 2021 program. And we are now putting that on the 2022 program. The way the specification is going to be written this year for the paving program is going to be more of a à la carte style spec where we are going to actually pick and choose what roads out of these that we can do, providing that we're within budget. The reason for that is we're looking anywhere from 4% to almost 40% increase in materials. And at this current time, we have no idea where to even begin to predict what's going to happen in the next few months. So the spec will be written that will allow us to handpick what roads we want to actually have done so they're within budget. Does anybody have any questions? Great.
All right. Pending no questions, we'll move on to item number two, the liaison reports. Subitem A, Environmental Committee, Jack?
I haven't attended any. My first one will be this Wednesday.
Okay. Is there any updates, Bob, from the previous one? I know they were probably the minutes previously attached.
Minutes were previously attached. There has been some discussion regarding having a, another capstone project undertaken by the students at the University of Pittsburgh to update the town's sustainability program and look at the where we are with that. But they, they've gotten some of the initial discussions started there, but no final decision made there. So that's one. That's one item that this discussed there.
Thank you. Under Liaison Reports, Reports, Technology Committee, Ms. Robba.
It's the committee is moving forward, moving ahead with the phone system and also moving forward with the website to help to start to generate some communication and some input from the community for the website. And that should be probably coming around, probably the first of February, somewhere around there. We're still working on some issues with the enterprise software as well as, we have another. Are we going to see one more?
We've looked at some demos. There's a couple of other demos that we're looking at on the planning and building side of things that will be part of phase two. But we, what we're doing currently is reviewing references from other communities on the, the three primary software packages that we've identified to get a sense of how they're, how well they're working in those communities.
Correct.
Yes, the tech committee, if I may. I, I noticed, I noted about an intern and there was discussion about whether this would be an IT intern or communications intern. Has that been settled at some?
Yeah, I think they, the initial thinking is that we would, we would look at a communications intern, only look at a more technological type intern down the road, but we're, we're looking more at somebody who has some communication background or potentially even some graphics, you know, to make sure that we are addressing the needs in the website and that it's going to have that welcoming look that we're, we're wanting, that, that great first impression that we think we need.
We say in real estate is the, the first showing happens online and then they make an appointment for the second.
Yes.
But I, I would just hope that this, if it is a communications geared intern, that they would also possibly talk with our other committees to see what their needs are as well and getting them.
That's, that's part of what we want to do. We want to make sure that we've addressed the needs of
Thank you.
various committees and departments.
I have one comment, Councilman, or Councilman Robba. I met with the resident who just wanted to keep in mind that even in a new website, we make sure we take a look at it being accessible for ADA. Visual impairment was the disability and there are certain aspects of websites that make it easier for certain softwares to download and translate. And I think it's something we should at least, you know, be due diligent, make sure as we're going through this process, we're catering to all the needs of our residents. So please keep that in mind.
I'll take that back.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for? Any other questions or comments for the technology committee? Pending none, stormwater management ad hoc committee. I know President Taral, we're going to talk a little bit about ad hoc committees, but real brief, I just want to talk. It's, you know, comprised of a couple of us here on council and we're all kind of digesting all the information right now. So we're, we're taking it as it comes to us. We can speak more to that, I'm sure, later. At this time, is there any public comment on the facilities management from the audience? If not, is there any online?
Yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Singer. Next up, report to the services committee, Ms. Clunin.
Thank you, President Taral. As you noted earlier, we've had some reassignments. So I think most of the people who would be able to speak to these items are not with us right now, but I will begin with the, the MTSA. Mr. Casey, if you have anything to share. I know the last meeting was twelve.
I attended the first, I'm sorry. I attended the first organizational and regular meeting, which was January the sixth. And this is an exceedingly well organized, run organization that we can really be proud of. Everybody seems to get along very well and the meeting is orderly and moves quickly. They did elect a lot of, all the officers, they elected their everyone that has an impact on their organization, whether it be the, a town, their attorneys and their engineers. And they also approved a new bond, doing a new bond issue to take into account their old bond and try to get things cleaned up. Moved very fast and it was very interesting. And I, I learned a lot, but I know I have a lot more I need to learn.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Moving on to the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Zachary, if you have anything to report?
My first meeting will be next week. Bob, can you tell me if the RFP for the consultant has been sent out yet?
It, it was just being sent out and I'll give you a copy, a final copy. Tomorrow, we, we just finalized that and it was agreed on the, the consultants to, to send it to.
How much, how much time will we give them to return, to respond? Thirty days?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I look forward to reading it. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the Northland Public Library Authority, Mr. Singer?
Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend a meeting yet. The minutes were attached, but I cannot speak to them as any more than what you can.
The, yeah, you'll.
I'll get it here at the end of the week. So I, I did, I did reach out. Thanks to Bob's coordination. I'll be taking a tour of the library and doing some meetings.
And you'll find the folks working there as well as our other committees are really doing a great job for the community, I'm sure.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
At this time, if there's any public comment from our folks in our audience here on the services committee? Anything online? That concludes the report on services committee. Thank you.
Next up, is there any old business that we need to discuss?
Taral, would this be the time to bring up a question about remote meetings or would that be under new business?
What about the meetings?
I would like to, being in healthcare and seeing the straining that is happening in the healthcare system and the number of members of the workforce in healthcare I can speak to that are ill right now, twenty, almost thirty percent of our workforce is calling off daily due to illness. And I, in trying to protect the staff and the citizens in our town, I would like to strongly recommend that we go to back as we did before at the worst of COVID last year, I think it was, maybe the year before. I can't even remember now, to remote meetings to help lessen the chances of our staff. Council members can stay at home, but staff cannot. If we decide to have meetings and our staff have to be there, and I know some of them do have health situations that would be not optimized if they became ill.
Were you looking at a timeframe, like it's for the month of January, February? Like what, what would a trigger be?
A lot of, Bob, can you tell us what surrounding communities do, are doing? I know the ambulance authority is out because there are doctors on that. They've already, they're already going remote. What some of the surrounding communities?
A few of the communities are moving back to remote meetings. And I think the general feeling is that it would be through February, if not into March at this point, I think is the general consensus that I'm hearing of those communities that are moving to remote or virtual meetings.
And you mean go now and then through March?
Correct.
Yes, yes. I, I think that's what they're saying. Things should be lightening up in April, they hope.
Yeah, they, and just anecdotally, we're, we're dealing with more positive cases now than we ever did.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
With our staff. Not as severe a case, but we've, we're constantly now having to deal with cases where we didn't before.
Okay. What does everyone else on council think? Do we have any comments on? Anyone have a comment one way or another, concern or? None one way or another?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm split either way. I think, I mean, I obviously can see the uptick. I also think it, it serves a purpose to continue to function as government. I think we're a little further ahead than we were two years ago when we were fully remote. Vaccinations are available. You know, booster shots are available. I just think we're in a little bit different of a position than we, where we were before. With that being said, it's, as Ms. Zachary said, it's, it's a staffing issue. You know, at the same time, we don't want to lose staff, but I question even have a, a meeting remote, staff still probably likely has to be present in, you know, running this operation still, somebody still has to be here. You know, more than one possibly to continue this. So I don't know what the benefit worth, worth the risk is unfortunately. I don't know if I'm capable to make that decision.
So you're more either way or you're more?
I would lean more towards keeping it in person. I think hybrid model works well. I think the ability to be here if necessary, be remote works well.
One on each side. Anyone want to weigh or another?
I just got over COVID last week, so I was, what was it, January? But I, I mean, being that my whole family were all fully vaccinated, it is true. We got it so easily. I mean, as careful as I was being, it was crazy. So I mean, I totally get what Kim's saying.
Steve, since this wasn't on the agenda, we would need to take public comment on this, correct?
Yes, we would. And we would also have to make a motion to add it to the agenda, why it wasn't on the agenda, make that statement and then also vote on if there is an underlying motion as well. That's for the new sunshine schools. So if we get to that point, we would ask for public comment if there are motions to be made.
So we need to make a motion tonight to add it or we just add it and talk about it two weeks?
You can talk about it and add it in two weeks. But if you're going to do anything tonight, you have to make a motion to add it to the agenda. And then you could vote on the underlying motion, second motion. But you could also say we're going to talk about it at the next meeting. That's fine, too.
The reason I ask is that Dr. Venkat, I see in the chat, has offered to provide comment. He is attending and would be willing to comment.
We allowed to listen?
Yeah, you are if you would like to open the floor.
Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name is Arvin Venkat. I'm an emergency physician. I live in McCandless Ward One in Breckenridge. My address is one oh five Breckenridge Drive. I'm a member of the ambulance authority and I've been doing a lot of work related to public health conditions for COVID. What I would say in terms of the risks here is that for those who are triple vaccinated, double vaccinated and boosted, or if they had the Johnson and Johnson vaccine and were boosted, their likelihood of getting serious or symptomatic illness, both, you know, the kind that would get you in the hospital or the kind that would make you feel bad is very, very low. However, the issue that has been brought up here on the level of transmission in our community is a very important one. There is a way to mitigate this in terms of either a hybrid meeting or in-person meeting, but it really comes down to will the council be wearing high quality masks, N ninety-five masks and ninety-five masks? Will they be distributing it in the audience? Will they be distributing it such that anybody who is there in person is wearing those masks? In that context, people who are fully vaccinated and boosted and wearing those masks, the risks of transmission is extraordinarily low. However, the typical mask that most people are wearing, cloth mask, you know, the kinds that we've had to wear all this time, in the absence of full vaccination, and I really think realistically, we're talking about triple vaccination here, the likelihood of transmission in a congregate setting, such as where you're sitting, is very high. Doesn't mean that anybody's going to get a serious illness if they're vaccinated, but it's high. So my recommendation, just as a healthcare professional, would be if you're going to continue in-person meetings, maximize your mitigation efforts by having high quality masks for everybody and asking people to attest to their vaccination status. Otherwise, you're going to be setting yourself up for rapid transmission from these meetings.
Thank you for your input. Ms. Zachary, do you want to, what do we need, a motion to put it on the agenda?
Yep.
Or do you want to do it now or we want to do it in two weeks, Kim?
People that work upon, I like flies. I, I would, I'd like to do it tonight. That's why I brought it up tonight. Well, I, I sent you, I sent you and Bob a text mentioning it, but yeah, I, so I move that we add the possibility of remote meetings to the agenda tonight.
Should I second?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second? Okay. Everyone in favor? I, opposed? No. Okay. So now it's on the agenda and we discuss it like?
You can continue to discuss it or someone could make a motion with respect to meetings and moving forward.
Any further discussion from any, any members?
I, I appreciate Mr. Singer bringing up the effectiveness and, and the, the business of the town, but I can say from experience, when we were remote, I did not feel like we lost very much. I thought we still worked very well and the town staff here with the, the way they had organized very well, they, you know, limited number of staff in the building at any one time, et cetera, et cetera. It, I was really impressed by how well we as a town managed when we did go remote. And that was without experience doing it. And now we have experience doing it. So yeah. I, I, I'm worried here and after hearing our, you know, our, our neighbor and a professional who was seeing these folks in addition to our other medical professional who's on council, I am leaning toward going remote.
Any other comments from anybody?
Yeah, I had a dear friend die on Saturday from COVID. She was not allowed to be vaccinated for health reasons, so she was not vaccinated. That said, I've been vaccinated with the three vaccines and I think I would glean something out of having the camaraderie, but I, I understand extraordinary circumstances. So I'm willing to, to do whatever team wants, yeah.
Any other comments? I think my only comment is that, you know, I think that, I think Mr. Singer said, you know, we have more tools now to fight this, this virus. Well, you know, we can go through what they all are. So we're in a better spot. And I think the hybrid model gives an option to everybody. If you feel more comfortable staying at home, you stay at home with, with just like some of our town committee, some of our town employees, they, they felt more comfortable there. So I like, I like the hybrid model. So that's my two cents. So.
The, the hybrid model does not give the option to the AB staff who are there as well as to the other staff members who are attending, who have to make the in-person meeting, open the doors, let everybody out, who have to be there for in-person meetings. So they, their option, and, and that's primarily who I'm concerned about here. If the council members want to take their chances, then it's their chances. I'm trying to advocate for people who would be required to come in based on our decisions. And I'm talking about our town staff, which I'm trying to look out for.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the town all town meetings, all boards, authorities, as well as council meetings, be remote until the end of March, at which time we can evaluate to see if we need to extend that.
A second.
Point of clarification.
Sure.
So like the MTSA has their own board with, are we going to affect that board as well?
Not of the independent authorities, but the commissions and committees of the town, it would be this motion would apply to that. So not the ambulance authority, not the library authority, not MTSA, et cetera.
Maybe we need to clarify that.
Okay. Ms. Zachary, would you agree to that clarification that we're not directing our authority that we are part of as part of this motion?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. And who was the second? Would you agree to that as well?
I would also agree.
Okay, having a motion to second?
Any other discussion?
Oh, any other discussion from?
The second, after the second one.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Then ask for public comment.
Public comment for those in the room? Public comment for those online? Public comment from the room. Yes, our junior councilman.
I hate to, I fully understand the effects of, I mean, the people here that are at risk by being here and don't have the option to go online, but COVID fatigue is a real thing and Noetalagani is forging ahead with online school despite double-digit COVID cases every single day. And in fact, we're getting rid of masks on the eighteen, which is an interesting decision at this time of the year. But that's not my place. So I, I understand how the move to remote would be the effective decision given the cases, given that what all of society is going through. But we are all tired. I mean, I'm tired of virtual anything. And if N ninety-fives are fully distributed, if we can make sure that we are all being safe by being here, that everybody here, not even on the council, is being safe and has a ninety-five mask, I do continue to think that would be the best thing for everyone. However, it's such a marginal benefit. I do understand the, the circumstances of the times that we're living through. So there's my comment.
Thank you.
We have several online comments.
Okay. Who would be first?
The first one. There is a comment that was written into the chat box by Deborah Sagan.
We can acknowledge her and she can state it.
She can just speak it. Okay. Well, first, let's go to Marcia Caliendo, one oh five two nine Abbey Lane for a comment.
Okay. Ms. Caliendo? Ms. Caliendo?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I, I really, I am a member of the ambulance authority as well, and we made the decision last month to go remote. And we do have two physicians on, on our board, one of which you've already heard from Dr. Venkat. I, I just, we are all tired of COVID. There is no doubt about it. But COVID is not tired, tired or done with us. I, I do believe that it's for the safety of all involved. I've, I've actually believed that there's a lot more participation from residents with the, with the hybrid meetings. I mean, I would, used to come to meetings in person. We've been, we've been doing it virtual for nearly two years now. And I do believe that there hasn't been really any detriment to the town or, or that you've been able to function. Please take care of your employees. It's so important that we all take care of each other. So I would really hope that you vote to, to go totally remote. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else online?
Yes, the next individual is Deb Sagan of 9995 Parkland Drive.
Ms. Sagan?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me now?
We can.
All right, great. First, thanks for, Ms. Zachary, for bringing up this important point. I think everybody has sort of gone around what I was going to say, but I also heard the doctor mention that people need to attest to whether they're vaccinated or not. And, you know, he did reiterate how masks of quality do help. However, we, we can't be sure if people are vaccinated or not. And to that point, you know, why endanger our staff and, and our citizens by meeting? You know, what is being gained? Are the gains, you know, cost benefit? I think we have to look at that. So we have the technology to have these meetings remote, and it seems to be working rather smoothly. And if not, those bugs should be brought to light, no pun intended there. But we should look and see what we can do to, our, our health is of paramount importance. So I think that, that needs to be considered, and we're all watching Allegheny County report the numbers increasing. We know that there's a spike happening now, a month or two with remote meetings. What can that harm? But what can it help? We know what it can help. So thank you for listening to my comment, and good, welcome to all the new council members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sagan.
Next comment is again Dr. Venkat.
Yes, thank you. I live at 105 Breckenridge. I would just emphasize again to the council that I think you have one of two choices. One is to go fully remote, or otherwise, if you want to stay either hy, if you want to stay hybrid or fully in-person, to really take all of the safety steps to protect all of yourselves, your constituents and your staff, which is distributing high-quality masks and making sure people are wearing them properly, attesting that people are triple vaccinated, and maximizing your physical distancing within the space you have and improving the ventilation you have. Just speaking for myself, that is going to be very, very hard to do, and I think you may be borrowing more trouble in terms of doing that, but realistically, that is an option. But, yeah, I think you'd be putting a great deal of burden on yourselves versus going remote. I don't know that it has to go all the way to the end of March. I think every public health expert is expecting that we will peak probably in the next two to three weeks. So you might be able to look even at reassessing at the end of February as opposed to the end of March. But I think those are the, really the two options that you have between going remote or being very aggressive with your safety options for a hybrid or in-person meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Yes, Mary Ann Love.
Ms. Love, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I put it in chat. Um, so anyhow, I just want to comment that I'm wholly, totally in favor of, favor of remote only. I will not attend a live meeting these days, and I'm sure there are others who feel the same. I will also mention that I have a son who's an infectious disease doc. I follow his instructions, and his instructions to me are remote meetings, period. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Love. Anyone else?
Yes. The next person is David Smith.
Mr. Smith?
Hi. David Smith, 934 Meadowcrush Drive. You know, you knew I couldn't go two meetings in a row without talking. I, I just wanted to jump in because of this conversation with, you know, with, if there's going to be any in-person meetings. And I get the concerns, and, and I'm not trying to weigh in on that boat. But the, the part that kind of perked my ears a little bit is, would be having people attest to their vaccination status. You know, I still think that needs to be a personal decision for people, and there shouldn't be something where if they want to attend a public town hall meeting, that they need to publicly state that they are triple vaccinated. I, I get why, you know, some people would want that to happen, but I, I just don't think that's proper. I think that's a, you know, I think that's kind of getting into infringing on, on people's privacy rights. And I, I know, I'm not saying that legally, I'm saying that in more of a moral sense, I guess. And at least, as long as I'm not misinterpreting the data with the Omicron variant, the transmission rates aren't that much different between triple vaccinated folks and, and even unvaccinated folks in, in terms of transmission rates going through them. You know, obviously, people who are unvaccinated, it's more of a risk to them to, to get the code, to get COVID. But in terms of transmitting it to other people, from what I've read, it didn't seem like there was a significant difference between unvaccinated and vaccinated in that sense. I might be wrong about that, but, or I might be misinterpreting the data that I read, but, but that's how I interpreted it. And then the only other thing I wanted to jump in with, just to give you more options. At one point, our previous council had discussed hybrid meetings, but kind of where council members took turns two at a time to kind of keep spacing. You know, so I'll just complicate it by throwing a third, or fourth, or fifth option, whatever we're up to now into there. But those, you know, I get to complicate it now and then sit back. I get to throw the grenade in the room and then, you know, walk away unscathed. So, but that's my public comment. Thank you for, for listening. And, you know, welcome, welcome to the new, to the new council as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Next person is Carolyn Gibbs.
Ms. Gibbs, can you hear us?
Yes, I seem to not be able to turn on my video. I just would like to say that, having served on my church's decision-making body for making decisions about COVID, I know this is a very difficult thing to do, and I appreciate that all of you are considering this. I would appreciate it if you take into account the needs and health of your staff, as others have stated, and I would also like the council to discount any statistical analysis that is not backed up by published data or by doctors. Let's not speculate. Let's use, use good sources for our information. And again, I thank you for considering this motion. That's it.
Thank you for comments, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay. Any last comments from council?
Yes, I'd like to make another comment. We've talked about lots of needs and health of staff. And my concern is, we're talking about specifically these meetings this evening, about our staff's safety and concerns. If this is a safety concern of this council, what are we doing to continue that during regular business hours? Are we going to require our staff to no longer take meetings with public? Are we going to require all N95 mask use while work? Because that is the same exact needs and health of our staff during those times as it would be this evening. I mean, at what point do we care about our needs and concerns of staff's health compared to during council meetings and during normal working hours? And I'm just trying to explain and understand that to me, so I understand what I'm voting on. Are we?
Yeah, it's very good point.
Doing something just for council meetings, or are we actually doing something for the, the needs and the health of staff? And I think that needs to be understood, because I have doctors telling me here that N95 masks are a requirement, but that does not seem to be the policy. Are we still having meetings with developers coming in for permitting? Are we going to full remote permitting? You know, what are, this isn't an all or nothing. This virus doesn't pick and choose when it wants to infect someone. So the decision we make here should be all encompassing. If that's the decision, we're going to incorporate. Keep that in mind.
So that's a totally different motion.
That's a totally different motion. There are a few separate things.
Or should we table it?
No, I was going to say, unless council has any argument, we, we as a staff can follow the guy, guidance of the council regarding the meetings. I can direct my staff to take only virtual meetings with developers. And if somebody is coming into the, to the office, that we would not take necessarily an unannounced meeting, that we would just require it be scheduled so that we can prepare ourselves for, set up a, what we did, what we did here before is we set up the room large enough that everyone could distance, and we could hold the meeting. So, but my feeling would be that, number one, we're already allowing remote work where it's appropriate for staff. So we're, we're never fully staffed day-to-day. We always have somebody or several people in and out. But I would, I would direct staff to just go back to virtual meetings with developers or residents, and that if, if there is going to be an in-house meeting, it be scheduled, and we distance properly. And I, I think we can address that. We, we did it back in 2020, and we've managed so far, knock on wood, that we've not had a case of transmission between staff members that this far. So I think that the things that we're doing, we're doing right. We can just amplify those again here. And I, I can just do that as a policy directive to the staff, and I can do that tomorrow morning.
But to jump off of Mr. Singer's, but where does it stop? How, how does it affect our police officers? How does it affect the road crews?
Just go back to what we did. We, we didn't require, we required one man in a truck. We staggered start times. We can do all that.
And that, that's my question. Do we want to fully go back to these mitigation efforts? Even though in today's world, we have much better tools at our hands to do that.
We have varying vaccination levels depending on departments. And I, I would want to take that into account. You know, and again, the things that we did in 2020, just simple, simple fixes. The end of, one individual in a truck, if there have to be two people in the truck at any time that they're masked, and we can provide the N95 or, you know, higher-level mask if necessary. We can stagger start times. We managed very well in the, in the departments.
Bob had, Bob did a beautiful protocol and had, and I'm sure he still has it written somewhere to reinstitute it. And I'm sure he would be glad to send a copy to all of council. The way he man, we managed, he managed, he set all this up two years ago that was very successful with staff. It worked well, and we already, he already has the plan. We just have to reinstitute it maybe for a couple months, hopefully.
It seems like the plan is ever just being piled upon, and it would make me, me feel more comfortable if we wrote the plan down and saw it in two weeks and can vote it up or down that. Because we're, we're just pointed out six or eight different things that could or cannot be added to this motion.
Well, I, I would just say from the motions perspective, we're just talking, and we just added onto the agenda about remote meetings. The other issues, if you wanted to discuss them tonight, you would have to vote to add it to the agenda. That's the employment stuff.
Can I just make, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? That shouldn't really come from council. As far, no, no, as far as personnel, that should come from Bob. That's his directive. That's his business. I think we need to vote, what we need to vote on, and let Bob manage his own departments. I mean, that's what the protocol would be. We shouldn't have to tell them what they should be doing. That's his responsibility, and he's already gone through it. If he wants to reestablish that, then he, he can institute it. Right now, I think we just need to vote on, are we going to go remote? Are we going to do hybrid, period?
In, in the past, council has allowed the manager to manage how he or she were. They believe that the town should be operated. I don't recall any motions around requirements as to how far you sit apart, or where you, where you wear a mask, or who's in a truck, or anything like that. And so that's where I was headed with my comments, and, and great minds think alike. And Ms. Roble was right there ahead of me. So my, my view would be that you all consider this motion, and then if you want to talk about those employment things, we are going to have an executive session later. You can discuss it in there if you like. You can continue discussion here. But if we wanted to continue, you'd have to make a motion to add it to the agenda tonight.
Okay, so.
So I think we're just at the motion about the meetings at this point.
It would be the meetings and any liaison committees that we go to. So, okay, so any final comments before we vote?
I, I would think maybe an amendment, after hearing from Dr. Venkat, that the, the peak is in two to three weeks. Maybe just to extend this to the end of January for now, where it could be renewed at that time, if that is the case.
I think you mentioned end of February.
I thought you said maybe, earliest would be March. That's what you said.
Well, if, if for the amendment to occur, it has to be agreed to by the motion maker, which is Ms. Zachary, and the second here, which I believe is Ms. Roble.
My motion stands.
Mine stands.
For the end of March.
To the end of March.
And I'll just mention for that, that doesn't mean council can vote to change it at a future meeting if you see that the numbers are changing in such a way that you can get together soon.
Exactly. That's right.
All right. Any final comments from council? I'll leave with this. We are leaders in our community. If we lead and show that we're going to be remote, what is the school district going to do? Do we want the kids out of the classroom again? People are watching what we do. It doesn't mean that we're harsh people and don't care about those that work for us or each other. We have mitigation efforts in place from vaccinations to boosters to social distancing to masks. We're doing everything we can. We're in a much different place than we were two years ago. So I will leave it at that. So I guess it would be to sum it up. We're going to vote on everyone in favor of the motion on the floor to go to remote council meetings from now until the end of March, and those meetings would, would also be any liaison position that the town has jurisdiction over. Go to fully remote until the end of, end of March. Everyone in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Nay.
Nay.
We do roll call.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Nay.
Word four.
Nay.
Word five.
Yay.
Word six.
Aye.
Word seven.
Aye.
Word three.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Very good. Is there any other old business at this time? Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to new business. I think this is just a notification, Bob. I need to, yeah, just, uh, we're gonna have a notification that there's a public hearing on ordinance for the town council of the County McCandless, Allen County, Pennsylvania. Amendment art, amending Article one twenty-three, authorities, boards and commissions and Article one thirty-five, one thirty-seven Personnel Board of the Town Code of Ordinances to increase the number of Personnel Board members from three to five and to adopt a five-year term for all members appointed after January first, twenty twenty-two. So we will have the public hearing at the next meeting, correct? And then vote on it. The meeting falls. Uh, moving through the new business, um, I wanted to discuss, we have four ad hoc committees uh, that are comprised of members of council. That's the Police Engagement Committee, the Stormwater Committee, the Grant Writing Committee and the Budget Committee. Uh, moving with our process of just keeping things as clean as possible so we could focus on our, uh, our efforts on the high priority things. I guess I wanted to hear council's um, opinion on, uh, if we should keep all four of these ad hoc committees together, or we should eliminate one or two. And by eliminating doesn't mean that it's not an important item. Those could be rolled up to something that a, a town staff member does. So, um, I guess I could start if I could, the, like, the Grant Writing Committee. I know, Ms. Clunin, you sort of chaired that. Would you want to share your impressions if you feel that's a valuable effort for us to continue or it could be done a sort of differently?
Sure, um, I think in my, the, yeah, I'm not sure if the new council members had access to it, but, um, in December I did share a report, a summary of what I learned. And the basic bottom line of it is that, um, that our town staff is already seeking, um, the grants that we would be eligible for as a municipality. And that the other grants would need to come by way of a nonprofit. And so I think until we can get a partnership formed with a local nonprofit or create one of our own, we're kind of at a standstill. And there's not gonna be that much more movement toward it. And I have reached out to the McCandless Community Association, still trying to get more information from them to see if that partnership can happen. And I'll report back when I have news on that.
So we could dissolve this committee and have the town staff sort of take this over?
That's kind of what they're doing anyway.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I don't see a need to have more meetings when really until we can get um, at least some interest from a nonprofit, there's just nothing to meet about.
Okay. Just, uh, we don't need to take a vote on this, right? It could just be, had Bob, is everyone sort of okay with? Ms. Zachary, you have opinion one or another?
Um, I had a citizen call me this week and, um, she lives in McCandless and her professional job is that she writes for grants for states, federal grants for states. And she said, we are missing out on a lot of money. She said she heard the whole library thing. And she said that we are missing out on a lot of money. Um, and she was, she said that, I asked her to please get me some names of what's the best way to do this? Is it to get into it? An agency, is it best to hire a part-time person? Is it, how would you do this? And she's gonna get back to me. Um, these ad hoc committees were, um, set up to support staff um, and do some of the work because staff has so much to do already. So they were, this was rolled down from staff to help, to help them. And to have, you know, council members do some of the work and council members to, you know, um, have some ideas and, and kind of support staff. So that was the original premise that the ad hoc committees were put, and maybe some of them have not served their purpose yet. Um, so I, my understanding was that Grant Writing, um, Committee was going to look at um, what would be benefit, what are, what are our options? If we hired an in-house grant writer, what would that look like? If we hired someone who, if we hired a company? If we, uh, what, what are our options to, um, to, and not just write for grants, but help administer those grants? Because apparently that's where the work is, from what Bob has told me, is writing for grants is not the problem. It's, you know, all the administrations associated with that. So that's what I kind of thought that was looking at, to make a recommendation to council of, here are some places that you can hire people. And, um, I've talked, our solicitor has said that, um, um, Ross used, um, grant writers and they paid for themselves. How many times over did you say?
Many times over.
Many times over, um, by hiring a, a firm or you know, but you have to be project ready, you know, so it's not just, so it's kind of a complex thing, but maybe, uh, our staff members are pretty busy. That's why we were trying to help them out. My comment.
Trish, sort of, you were sort of, yeah, it's probably.
I, I agree. And I think, um, it, what I heard from our staff and from, again, just to reiterate what Ms. Zachary said, it's the administration. It's not the writing. And that was in my report I gave in December as well. Um, and, you know, right now, I'm not, you know, looking at what our grants can put, what a grant could possibly do coming from act, the Acting Chair for Recreation, not having a recreation department. You know, we could be given a million dollars to put towards recreation, but if we don't have a recreation director to manage that money, what's the point? Until we refocus and see what maybe the roles are in the town, I don't know. Bringing in the money, it needs to be administered. And, and that's until that, we have a plan for that, and that's gonna come from the town and council level. I think more, you can't say to, you know, Trisha, great house. Oh, guess what? We're bringing in, you're gonna be responsible for a million dollars on this program on top of what you're already doing. Because we don't have the staff to do it. Um, you know, this is where we, at the AAC was talking about bringing in and then turn to assess these needs and things like that, but the intern idea even there was shut down because there's nobody to keep an eye on an intern. There's just definitely an overburden of the staff we have right now. And I don't know what the answer to that is. I know, you know, we brought up Ross. Ross has a huge recreation department. They've got a recreation director. They have an assistant recreation director. So if they get these monies for recreation, they have people there to manage it. We do not. We've never had a recreation department.
So how did they get there?
How did they get? They've always, as a town, I don't know why. I don't know what the history is. I don't go back that far in this town. Why we do not have a recreation department in this town. I have no idea. Well, that's probably why.
Well, I think the recreation things are separate, so.
It, it's just an example of why I feel that this committee could do, put a lot of time into work. And, you know, I'm not sure who, you know, the grant writing is there and, but unless a way to receive it and manage it. I think we're just gonna spin our heels, you know? We, we put in money for these park grants, but I wonder if we did not get the money because we don't have a recreation and parks department. I don't know if that's a reason why, you know, that we did not get the Wal Park thing that we applied for.
Ad hoc committee, maybe just refine the, the, the mission and the goal?
I'm not sure what the purpose of the committee is. I, I, I'm not sure. I, I think there's money that could be found and just what I've seen looking at other communities like Pine, like Mount Lebanon, you know, communities that are similar in makeup and, and, and residence and socioeconomic status, et cetera. They are partnering with nonprofits to get more money into their community. The town is part, partnering with the nonprofit, not just having the town put their name on a grant.
How much does our staff, how much of that falls to them, Bob, with the grants? And, and is it a full-time? Is it a part-time? Does everyone do it a little bit? Like, what's the?
It, I would say it's, it's part-time spread out the, um, as far as the grant writing is concerned. Um, when we have a little bit of an overload, um, we utilize gateway for some assistance. And they, they obviously will have to provide assistance on the, the technical side regarding scope or, or cost estimates. Um, if it comes that type of grant. Um, but then again, Jeff, Shane and I have put together uh, cost estimates and grants. Uh, you know, I've, I've worked with Trish, I've worked with RJ. You know, I think that, you know, we can easily work with a nonprofit on that, on that aspect of it. Cause you can have a grant that it takes you half a day to write and it's done. The, the administration, as, as Ms. Clunin said, is ongoing and, and more time consumed. Um, but to your point, I think, um, we with limited staff assistance or additional staff assistance, we could accomplish that. You know, the, the costs associated with a, a grant writer or a firm um, could easily be transferred over to staff that we have somebody more regularly. Now, the, the key, and Steve and I have talked a lot about this, the key with a, a firm, um, it isn't the grant writing skill, it's the contacts that they have that are necessary. And my, my suggestion would be even if we have staff help doing this, there may be a project or a tie where we think it makes perfect sense to go to a firm and, and go to a federal level for funding or state level for funding, uh, make contacts and have discussions that for those specific projects that we would want to do. It may not be an ongoing cost, but very, uh, project specific. If you get into a, a, a large budget, a large transportation project. So ones that come to mind immediately.
So I would like to suggest that we fold the grant writing ad hoc committee and let staff take over the, the finding of the grants. And if there's a, a point where it becomes too burdensome, we can come up with a new hire on another budget year or something. Can I get nods? Like, that seems reasonable or unreasonable? I guess a one nod to. Okay, okay. So we'll fo, fold the grant writing ad hoc committee. The other one was the Police Engagement Committee. Who, who ran that and what was sort of the original?
There was never a discussion. It just happened. So I would say, I mean, I know with Ryan, he and I were always, you know, up on what was going on. I know, um, through the police department, we were trying to do as many, you know, coffee to cops and different activities where we were engaging with the community. So I don't really see where this was necessary because there's nothing to report on. Cause what?
Yeah, basically Ryan, and Ryan is doing it as, as with his, with his group's role.
Yeah.
Okay. Would everyone be in acceptance if we folded that ad hoc committee since Ryan seems to be? See, I see, yes, and it's. Well, yeah, Ryan is the committee. Yeah, the others are the, uh, Stormwater Management Committee. Does anyone, you know, feel that, that, that should, that should continue one way or another?
Personally, I think that's a great idea. We need to get some of the neighbors that are affected, involved, and try to find out some solutions that can make immediate impact. Particularly in the Pine Creek corridor.
Yeah.
I don't know about the other quarters, but Pine Creek has a serious issue that needs addressed quickly.
I think this is one of our biggest problems in town, and this is a, an important committee. I just wanted to hear what everyone had to say.
I was gonna say, I believe the group on Pine Creek has a Facebook page. I know there's, sometimes I will see, you know, different communications going on there, but.
I think that's more for that farm that was along Pine Creek Road than it was for the, but I don't, I'm, maybe we're looking at.
It started beforehand, because Brandon, who lives at the bottom, he had started, I believe, but he seems pretty vocal and, you know, I'm, although I think it's also connecting him with other, like Patricia and different, has a different streets of flooding would be a benefit too.
I, I think it's beneficial to have someone on council that can, you know, help Bob with this. Bob's obviously our, our lead in the um, administrative end. Um, you know, I'm happy to be a part of it. Um, coming off the Environmental Committee, participating in flooding talks we've had before, personal background. Um, I think it's paramount because we're about to look at the stormwater ordinances. And there's discussion of a stormwater authority. So I think, you know, those are two major, major items. There's a lot to undertake here. And I think, um, preliminary right now, it's set up as, uh, Dr. Rafa, myself and Jack.
Yep.
I think it's a great experience and blend of this board to give input. And I think we can all add wonderful, um, features to it.
I agree. It's important to keep, is it head nods, everyone? Keep that committee moving forward. Okay. And the last one, there's our budget committee. This is obviously one of the most critical things we do as well. I was just wondering if we do it in a different way. I know whenever a new budget is presented, Bob and Trish sit down with a pair of us and go through detail by detail. But is that really taking the place of the budget committee? Or do you feel that there's a budget committee needed that could sort of summarize what the seven of us think and take to Bob and Trish as they're doing the, is they're doing the, the planning for the years to come?
I, for one, enjoyed the, the two by two immensely. I think that's what an invaluable resource. Um, as long as staff's okay with how that's presented. Um, if it's easier for you, I loved it personally.
I know I liked it too. It's nice to get everyone's feedback and kind of a little bit more of a concentrated.
Okay.
I think as council, that is such a critical part of why we were elected to be sitting here. That, that I would not feel comfortable leaving that completely in the hands of one or two other council people if I was not seeing that and being a part of the discussion throughout.
Okay, so we would, if, if, if I would, we would have, we would dissolve the budget ad hoc committee, but under the understanding that as budget season starts, every member of council gets invited on at least, uh, you know, two of us to sit down multiple hours, go through the budget. I see head nods there.
The, the budget, the budget committee, um, did not take the place of the two by twos. The budget committee was to speak with, um, was three members to get input from council on what were the important issues that, that council saw, um, that would be, um, looked at priorities in the budget. So when you sit down by two by twos and Bob and Trish go over the budget, Bob and Trish have made that budget. And they have set the priorities for that budget, and you're just hearing what those priorities are. So instead of hearing those at your two by two and then saying, oh, well, you know what? We would really rather put, we really think that we need more money into stormwater. And then now we want you to change what you've been doing. And when they've already worked so hard in this budget, by the time you're going to two by twos, the budget is pretty much made. So the budget committee was supposed to get input upfront before, way before that. And say, this is what council is saying is the, what we think the issues are to be dealt with. So the two by twos are totally separate than the budget committee. And, um, that's generally how that was supposed to work. So council would be the ones to decide what the budget priorities working with staff, of course, but decide what the budget priorities would be as opposed to the other way around.
And if we had a strategic plan, it would align with that. We wouldn't need to have that committee be there because the board would have already established their goals and had the priorities so that when they go to do the budget, they know what the priorities are and they incorporate them based on the year. If it's a five-year plan, first year, second year, third year, so forth. That's why. If it's a five-year plan, first year, second year, third year, so forth. That's why I say a strategic plan is an assassin.
Our options here are continue with the budget committee. Or to do the strategic plan, and then maybe have the seven of us funnel our, I funnel our. Wants, needs and desires through Carolyn and myself, and then we could take those to, to, to Trish and, and Bob as the. Have an opinion one way or another that.
I, I would even say to the point of your committee chairs or direct relation to each, you know. Um, connection, because they're actually connected to the department heads as well. Um, you know, that's as much connection to the budget as anything. I would say, you know, there's a two-way conversation with your department heads as well as Bob at that point. It serves almost as its own ad hoc committee directly related to staff and budget at that point. Um, instead of me conveying it to you, Mike, and then you conveying it right to Bob. As a committee chair for Public Works, I'm talking with Jeff and I'm talking with Bob about those items. And then, so it's already being dealt with on a staff level for those things, but again, back to.
They have, they deal with each department and everything's set up.
Yeah, the strategic plan is long-term, but I would say in short-term, the committee chairs reach service would serve as.
Advocate for the.
The budget goals. So that's what we're tasked with as the committee chairs to represent.
Yeah, so the, the six then would meet, understand what their committee is desiring. Take, bring it to council to say, here's what we're thinking. Yes, no, maybe.
Yeah.
And then, and then though, so really, any ad hoc committee, it's really us.
Yes, and that's, that's how I read this. My, my committee, you know, chair as the position of the title was to do that. Just bring concerns from my committee.
Yeah.
Present it to this council. So it would be the same thing as overarching ideas, overarching goals. If that's been transferred to me, I'm supposed to bring it to you. We're all members of these committees, but as chair, we're supposed to bring that to you. And, and then Bob can take that and allude that to the budget, and that will be working throughout the entire year to that. The two by two is simply just a confirmation that at the end, you know, I think we've all sat in those. They're minor adjustments, sure, and it changes, but those bigger overarching items are already being done without, you know, again. Pulling three of us and then having to talk to all of us anyhow.
Yeah.
It's just redundant.
Okay. If it's okay, I think this needs a little more thought through uh before we.
And it doesn't take a year to do a strategic plan.
No, no, no.
I mean, a strategic plan could be done in a week.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think I'd like to discuss this the, the next time we meet. And come sort of summarizing what we're kind of all, all saying here, so we know, you know, how we're gonna do the budgeting. Luckily, it's, it's out, it's out there ways. So, okay. Um, moving on to the discussion on the proposed redistricting. We heard numerous comments, six or eight of them I had written down, our constituents. Does anyone wanna, council, want to add anything that we maybe haven't heard or?
Just from an education perspective, I think you're really putting North Allegheny in a bad situation by splitting the district. Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's from an education perspective, not a political one.
So what are, what are our options as a board? We can send a, our comments to. What, what committee is?
Still legislative reapportionment, LRC. Individual members of council consume comments, uh, or you could send a letter from council. I've seen, I've seen both. I've seen other communities put information on their social media or their website encouraging your residents to make comments. If they would like to. But th- those are basically your options. I think the deadline to submit comments is in about a week. It's very soon.
Okay.
Testimony for written comment um is, the deadline is, now that's testimony, which is different than just your comments. Um, is January the 18th, and there are two more additional hearings, um, the 14th and the 15th. You can send someone, someone to speak to represent the town or individual members can go. But you do have to sign up ahead of time and it fills up pretty quickly.
So, would council be okay if we had Bob author a letter saying that we as a council. Do not like the idea of our community being in two different districts. For our purposes or in our school, in our school. Everyone can sort of.
I, I would be great with that. I, I spoke at the, at the meeting that was held here. I spoke to that effect of separating community. And that's, you know, the biggest thing. Uh, my ward in particular and Mike's in particular, the two that get carved out. You know, it's, and that's why I spoke, because it is a sense of community, you know, Mc- McCandless is fractured, you know. When you guys vote on something and uh you get state funding support, it no longer means it necessarily impacts us and vice versa. And I think one of our presenters said it uh perfectly, um, we're no longer whole, we're two halves. And that, that hurts a community. You know, we talk about the identity of McCandless at five zip codes, and this is just another way to divide it up again.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so everyone seems to be okay. Bob, if you could author sort of a, a letter. If you could see when the ne- next hearings are and you could attend, or I can attend, or. To see the details on there, and then could we get um John to put something up on social media and? Everyone in council okay with the social media approach too, then our, our residents know how to reach out and stuff?
Yes, wonderful.
Okay, okay, very good. Uh, okay, moving on, last but not least, general public comments. Anyone in the audience patient enough to wait? The whole time. Sir, Jim. Yes, yeah, Kim, come up here so we can hear you, and the uh. Thank you for your patience too.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Jim Langenham. I'm a resident here in McKens, lived here for sixteen years. I live at eight oh four Old Ingomar Court. The purpose behind my attendance this evening was to bring about attention to a traffic situation. That we have at Old Ingomar Court. Uh, we're on Highland Road, if you're familiar. And uh I have spoken in the past to uh Councilman Kirk and then uh Councilman Spohnhols. And we still have some work that needs to be done on this situation. There were letters written uh three years ago to the county. And uh that is one of the problems is Highland Road is under the supervision of the county and not McCandless. So trying to get something done is, becomes war of an administrative hurdle. But uh we have a new uh council rep here, Mr. Casey. I uh kind of had his acquaintance years ago, and I'm hoping to work with him since we live in the second district. And also with uh Chief Hawk back there. So I appreciate that, um, and I'm very happy to be a resident here in McCandless. I think you've done an excellent job through the years, and it's a wonderful place to live, and I hope it will continue that way. And I also would say I agree in not dividing North Allegheny. Both of my children went there. And it's a wonderful school system. It's one reason why we moved here. So I hope we can keep that and maintain that. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments, Jim. Any other general public comments before we, yeah, we have a.
We do, we have Suzanne Broughton.
Ms. Broughton, you have a general comment before we close up here?
It's, it's an addendum. About an hour and a half ago, I put in the chat. Uh, all the information about submitting comments to the Legislative Reapportionment Commission. Uh, so the, the website's there and the dates, times of the hearing are there. And I believe the January 18th deadline applies to written testimony as well as oral testimony. I think that's a hard just deadline for all, uh, all comments.
Thank you for that information, Ms. Brown. Any other comments?
Yes, uh, Deb Sagan.
Okay. Ms. Sagan?
Yes, hello again. I, I had just had a general comment about your discussion uh as far as the grant writing issue in the ad hoc committee. Uh, I was charged with writing grants for the North Allegheny School District for many years. And um, one step is writing the grant, which does take skill and knowledge. Um, but finding the grant uh that is appropriate for our town is a skill in itself. So that is the beauty of the person who's assigned to that or the ad hoc committee. And perhaps you could direct the ad hoc committee um to do some research on finding the grants. Because they, they don't come always knocking at your door, but sometimes they do. And that state grant writer is correct, that spoke with um Kim to say that we're missing out on monies. Um, and I, I still get notices about grants from the state, from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. They have a lot of grants uh for helping juveniles uh that could be applied in our town. I, I've, I'm a member of the North Hills. I think it's called a run bike hike. Um, it's a, uh, it's a committee that's been formed for the North Hills communities. And um, some of those communities are getting funding that we're, we're, could be available to us. Um, so I think one purpose of that ad hoc committee, in my professional opinion, would be to. Look for these monies and, and then write the grants, and if, you know, you want to have staff. Um, involved in that, of course, they're an important piece of this, because they have to spend the money. And that is also uh sometimes a difficult part. Uh, when you write the grant, you usually put in. How it will be administered, and sometimes you can even build in a salary for the person who's going to be administering the grant. But certainly that's a big part of the whole picture. So I wouldn't uh throw the baby out with the bathwater, to coin a phrase. Um, and maybe revisit that with the ad hoc um committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sagan.
And I, I was just gonna comment on the same thing. One of the first you can, things you can do is you can actually write a grant to have a recreation director. And then ask for monies within there on the things that you need.
You have any more comments?
Yes, we do. Uh, Dr. Van Cat?
Yes, um, sorry to, to revisit just the topic, but I just wanted to bring up that the next couple months. Unfortunately, there's gonna be significant disruptions in our community with the COVID outbreaks. We're already seeing this with the healthcare system, and it's going to spread um into other vital public services. Um, I, I completely agree with council member, I think, Smith, who said we're in a very different situation than we were two years ago. And I definitely agree that we should not be shutting down. But I think you have to look at this as a spectrum issue of how risky is an activity versus. What is the public benefit that you're getting from the in-person activity? Um, the examples that I think council member Smith brought up with police and sanitation and the like. I think clearly those have to continue in person, while a larger public meeting like this, where you're not gonna be able to limit. Attendance from an open public meeting is a very different circumstance. So by, by one suggestion to council is, as our elected leaders, you need to be making these waiting decisions. But I hope that you will draw upon the, you know, abundant healthcare expertise in our community. To try and help you with having vetted science when you're weighing those decisions. And so certainly, I think there are a number of healthcare professionals in the community who would be willing to help.
Thank you for your comments today, Doctor. Anyone else?
No.
No? Okay, I have a motion to, anyone, I have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second, second, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed, okay, off to executive session.